It is six o'clock and we will call to order the city council meeting for Kerrville on September 26, 2023. If you will stand with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, Lord, as we come together as a community tonight, we thank you first of all for the wonderful, wonderful rain and will take all that you'll send our way, Lord. We also thank you, Lord, for the community that we live in, the beauty, the amenities, the people, our river. We are appreciative of what we have and just help us, Lord, to take care of it in the way that you would like to see it be taken care of. We also ask and thank you for, we thank you for, the country that we live in, for the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you also, Lord, for all of those who are willing to take care of us every day, our local police, our local fire, our EMS, all of those who serve in that way. We also, Lord, thank you for those that are willing to go other places in the world and put their lives on the line for us every, every day. Help us to be appreciative, help us to recognize that when we have the opportunities. And, Lord, as always, when we come together at these meetings, we always need and ask for your guidance and for your direction as to what is best for our city. And we pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Stuart, you have some announcements for us.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you. We have a few items to talk about that are coming up. The first one is next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, October 7th, we have Movies in the Park returning. That'll be at Louise Hayes Park and it starts when it gets dark. And we're getting to the Halloween theme with Tim Burton's Corpse Bride. What are we, about 20, 21 days early, but hopefully that'll get people starting to go out and buy some candy for Halloween and get ready. But come on out, that's always a lot of fun. We have one more after that, which will be in November and we'll talk about that one later. After our next meeting, but we're still gonna go ahead and talk about it early because it's such a big deal, we have two events on October the 14th, which is a Saturday. Obviously, the Chop Festival will be a lot of fun that day, begins at 10:00 a.m., but the big event that we're, we're really excited about is the Kerrville River Festival. And festival grounds will open at 10:00 a.m. And then we have, as everybody knows, the Annular Solar Eclipse, which will begin approximately 11:50 a.m., lasts four minutes and 15 seconds. And we're hoping that we'll, well, we're counting on a lot of people being out there to see this event. It's gonna be a lot of fun. We do encourage you to get some eclipse glasses before you go out there. You do not want to look at the eclipse without them. I want to be very clear about that. Nashville will be here providing hands-on activities, giveaways, an keynote speaker. And then, of course, with the River Festival, we'll have a number of musical acts, including Danielle Bradbery. So encourage everybody to come out and see that. And I don't have a slide for it, but we will be sending out a press release tomorrow. The bulky, large item curbside pickup begins next week, so if you have some large items, be, be ready to put those out. If your collection week is Monday, the pickup is October 2nd through 6th. If your collection week is Tuesday, it's October 9th through 13th. And then you have, if you have a collection of Wednesday or Thursday, it's gonna be October 16th through 20th. So I want to keep that in mind. And like I said, we'll have a release tomorrow. I'm sure the papers will carry it. That's it for me.
Okay, very good. Council, anybody have, anything they would like to mention? Actually, I forgot to close our recess out of executive session, so we'll, we'll do that. You got that, right?
Yes.
Good. Okay. All right. We have some great presentations tonight. And the first one involves a great number of people, our back-to-school community partners for the Kerrville Kindness Award. And if all of those who are involved in that will come to the front, we'll do our, our thank you to you. Hand me those. Forgot to pick them up. All of, just all of those. Yes, thank you. All right. Thank you all for being here. City of Kerrville recognizes Light on the Hill, raise your hand. Okay. The Croc Center, here they are. The Doyle Community Center, nobody from there tonight. BK Cosmo College of Cosmetology, okay, didn't have any of them come. Eyes on me Barbershop, okay, we've got one. And the Historic Downtown Business Alliance. We'll have you all introduce yourselves after a bit. So, to all of you with the September 26, 2023 Kerrville Kindness Award, the Saturday prior to school starting in August, a number of our local organizations at different locations treated 465 local schoolchildren to new backpacks, school supplies, haircuts, shoes, and family fun days that included arts and crafts, games, activities, food, and bounce houses. These organizations included, all of these that we've just mentioned, the Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere and heartfelt thank you to each of you for your willingness and desire to ensure that our kids started off the new school year with a positive experience. You are appreciated very, very much. So I have one of these for each group. We'll give that to you. And, but I would like to have you, and I think we have a slide up here that shows some of the backpacks and some of that happening. And I'd like for all of you to introduce yourselves. And if you want to say something special about what you did that day, do so.
Hello, start. I'm Molly Putnam. I'm the Croc Director for the Salvation Army Croc Center. And with me today is Jeanette Santiago. She is our Social Service Director. So at the Croc Center, between our two areas, we had backpack assistance where we had over 211 backpacks that we handed out to kids in the community. So backpacks, school supplies, school supplies, new pair of shoes. And then we followed up with distribution at our Back-to-School Bash, free event for the community with bounce houses. We had food truck vendors. We had cake walk, a really great fun day out there to celebrate going back to school. So a huge thank you to our community. We have the most generous community. Being able to serve that 211 backpacks that we did was all through donations, not money out of the Salvation Army's pocket. So it's a very great thank you to our wonderful community for being able to do those things.
So I'm Jeanette Santiago, I'm Social Service Director at the Salvation Army. And it was a blessing to be able to be part of that and just, just seeing the kids so excited to get a backpack and talking with them. And it was, it was a great event. And thank you guys for your support and all the things that you guys have done too.
Okay, and I'm gonna give you this one. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Robert Williams, Southern Conference Hall, right downtown here. And I believe we made a donation toward purchasing backpacks and supplies. This is my wife, Vicki.
And I'm the Secretary of the Starfall Downtown Alliance Organization. And, and we're having a ball. Our, we have really seen quite a large improvement and support thanks to our new president, who will soon introduce himself. But it was a real honor to see those families lined up. It, it puts goosebumps on me. They were happy. They were smiling. They were excited. You know, it's hard sometimes when children don't have a lot of money and they're in a line to get something free. We don't want to hurt their self-esteem. We want to build their self-esteem. So they entered school with some wonderful back supplies, backpack supplies from school, and they got a backpack free. And, and it was a wonderful day. They left encouraged and their self-esteem was lifted. Don't you think so? When your kids left it?
Absolutely, yes.
So it was a great day.
This is Kristy Champion. I'm on the ferry mooning for him here downtown. And I'm the Secretary of the HDPA. And I'm gonna let Michael, our president, tell you all about it.
Yeah, so my name is Michael. I'm the owner of High Company Advanced Barbecue School, as well have the president of the Kerrville Historic Downtown Business Alliance. Pretty much just an organization of businesses downtown who wanna bring the downtown more to life. You know, I feel like the downtown area is really the heartbeat of any city or town. So we're just trying to, you know, bring more traffic, bring more funds to the downtown area. And with this, with this give back, we actually gave back 250 backpacks with school supplies, as well has free haircuts. So man, seen the smile and hot dogs, free food as well. Yeah, but just seeing the smiles on all those kids' faces, you know, like, those kids, man, they, they look forward to coming in and getting their haircut. And they really plan their whole day around it, you know. So seeing the smiles on those kids' faces meant everything. It was worth, I mean, we, we want to do it annually, you know, and hopefully it gets bigger and bigger. But I really want to say I appreciate the other organizations as well for, you know, doing stuff for the community because that's what it's all about, you know. And, you know, I like seeing everybody do, do different things all around the city and be more involved with the communities. So I'm all for it and I can't wait to continue giving back and, and doing it annually.
That's great. Well, we give one to the Historical Society here, or, well, almost. One to Eyes on Me.
Appreciate it.
We'll give some joy. And go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right. My name is Beth Palmer. My name is Beth Palmer, and I'm the Outreach Director at Kerrville Forest and Land Management District and Light on the Hill. And together we hosted our first back-to-school bash at Light on the Hill. And it was awesome. We've been part of, we've partnered with other organizations to participate and do that. This is our first one. I want to introduce our community health workers. This is Lori Payne. This is Emily Morales. And so they are commissioned to serve our community. So they've done a great job and they were a big part of the success of our first back-to-school bash. And we had, let me give a shout out to Total Image. They came and gave free haircuts and we had fun and food. And we were able, I mean, it's not just the three of us. It took a lot of people, a lot of support from our community, from grants that helped fund this, to private donations and lots of unpaid servants who gave their time. And so through it all, we were able to do shoe vouchers for kids to get new pairs of shoes and the haircuts. And we ended up, when it was all over, we did 681 kids with new backpacks and school supplies.
Wow.
So, thank you, everyone. And I will agree wholeheartedly. This is an amazing community. We're so blessed to live here and we're so grateful for all the support.
Quick story. Emily and I were doing intake for the food distribution line. And a lady came through and she said, thank you so much for the shoe voucher. My daughter was so thankful. She hadn't had a new pair of shoes for two years. And we were, it was just, it was, you know, you don't do it for the thank you, but to hear a story like that means the world.
We could go all night if y'all want.
Bill Rector, member of Historic Downtown Business Alliance, and I want to send the praises of Michael. He has done wonderful things for not only the youth of our community, but also downtown. And this is just another example of the Historic Downtown Business Alliance doing things for downtown and the community.
Well, we just thank all of you. And we all know, I mean, we're all kids, and how important those first few days of school are. And you just, you need to feel good. And you've made them feel good. So we thank you, thank you, thank you. So. Turn around, shake a hand of a council member, if you will, please.
Thank you all so much.
Better stop, stop just a second. We need to gather up and take pictures. Close it up. So now shake hands with council members.
Thank you, ma'am. Absolutely. Thank you.
Really? Oh, my gosh. This is awesome.
Beth, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have two proclamations. And I believe the next one is the night sky.
So will our night sky people come forward? Think we did something like this about a year ago. We voted this in. Yes. All right. City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas, the aesthetic beauty and wonder of star-filled skies are the heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Kerrville and are therefore worthy of celebration. The experience of standing beneath a star-filled night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and may encourage interest in science and nature, especially among young people. As a kid, I grew up on a farm in Nebraska and we had the Milky Way and beautiful night skies. I know what that means. Whereas, the opportunity to view star-filled skies attracts citizens and tourists to our region and therefore economic benefit to Kerrville, especially during highly anticipated events like the upcoming Annular Solar Eclipse and total solar eclipse. And whereas, preserving the rich historic heritage and starry night skies of Kerrville is important to its citizens and benefits the natural environment while improving the quality of life of those living and visiting here. And whereas, light pollution is artificial light that goes where it is not supposed to go, creates glare, light trespass, sky glow, overlighting, and wasted energy. Shielding lights, directing them downward instead of upward into the sky, lighting only what you need when you need it, only as bright as you need it, and using a light color that is warm white, such as 3,000 Kelvin, degrees Kelvin, or less, all help to reduce the problem of light pollution. The historical view of the night skies has been eroding in many nearby areas and generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. Light pollution is a human-caused issue that can be stopped and reversed to ensure future generations have access to the same starry nights. And whereas, the City of Kerrville, through its commitment to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, and to protect the night sky that adds to the quality of life and economic well-being for the city and its citizens, adopted an outdoor lighting ordinance in January 2023. And whereas, this growing regional effort and the preservation and celebration of our night skies is worthy of a month-long celebration. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Hill Country Night Sky Month. And we thank you guys. I think you were all involved last year in, in getting this started. And we appreciate it very, very much. So we'll let one of you hold this. We'll get a picture. And then we'll let you shake hands. Okay, all right. Would you like to, I want you to introduce yourself. And do you have something you'd like to say? Please do.
I'm Lang Dura. I'm new to the, to the organization, so I wasn't involved in that. But when I grew up, we had that song, "The stars at night are big and bright."
Right.
And, exactly. And so, you know, our star, our vision of our skies is a natural resource. We need to protect it.
Well, I'm Bruce Barton. And I'm one of the charter members of the Carr County Friends of the Night Sky. And my background is I'm an amateur astronomer. One of the things that I really cherish about the area is that the skies here are still dark enough to really appreciate what's going on with nature. But I fear that unless we get proactive about maintaining that sky darkness, we will become like many other communities across the nation where, I believe the figures, the latest figures that I've read are 80% of the people in the United States have never seen the Milky Way and wouldn't know what it is if they saw it. So I'm pleased to be a part of the organization.
Bill Rector, this organization has really worked hard promoting the eclipse and the City of Kerrville for the eclipse and helping with the committee. They've done a tremendous job. And we really appreciate the council's proclamation once again for October as Night Sky Month.
Very good. All right. Do we need to? Shake some hands? Of course.
Thank you for supporting the population.
All right. And we have one more. And this involves our teachers. Will they join me up here? Those who are here, please come up.
Brent definitely needs to be up here. I said you definitely need to be up here.
Thank you guys for being here. Where, City of Kerrville, World Teachers Day Proclamation. Whereas, future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. Teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas, teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. And whereas, our community recognizes and supports its teacher, teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas, hashtag Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, join hashtag Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day and do hereby proclaim October 5, 2023 as Kerrville Teachers Day. In the City of Kerrville, and I urge all citizens to join with me on this day to honor these educators and their contributions to our community. So we thank you guys very much. Introduce yourselves. And if there's something you'd like to say, please.
I'm Kenan Bush. And I've been in Kerrville ISD for eight years. My family moved here nine years ago. I am excited to be part of the education and the art community here in Kerrville. I will be chalking a square at the Chalk Center.
Yay.
And I know Councilman Herring's wife. We talked together at Tally until she retired. So I'm just honored to be Kerrville's Elementary Teacher of the Year.
I was gonna say, you all have an award.
I'm Shelby Balzer. I am the proud principal of Tybee High School currently. And I'm transitioning to be Dr. Ringo's Assistant Superintendent of Administration in a few short months. And I received the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, Region 20, Principal of the Year Award this year. And I would not be able to do that without the beautiful teachers that serve my students on my campus. So I give all the credit to them.
I'm Brent Ringo, the proud superintendent for KISD. And as you can see, the future is very bright in KISD. I cannot do what I do without these individuals. And if you were ever in Miss Kenan Bush's classroom, or if you're ever at Tybee High School, walk the halls and you just see how things function and run. My kids are at Tally and have Miss Bush. And it's pretty unbelievable to see when you see what our kids get to do every single day. It's because of teachers like Miss Bush and leaders like Miss Balzer. And I cannot thank them enough. And it's honored to be here. So thank you for having us.
Well, please shake a hand of a council member.
Somebody's got very big shoes to fill. So.
Absolutely. Congratulations. You had a thankless job, so.
You are welcome. And you guys keep up the good work, okay? And, and the football team. All right. Good, good things in our community. We are blessed. All right. We will go to number four. Number three, that's right. I always forget number three. Okay, visitors, citizens, do we have some speakers signed up? Yes, ma'am, we have four. Okay. And I will just remind everybody to be kind, courteous, respectful. We're asking that you don't use any names. And I think tonight, let's limit our comments to two minutes. Again, please. Michael Sigerman.
Yes, I am Michael Sigerman. I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive in Kerrville, Texas. And I'm only here because this concerns me personally. At the last council meeting, there was some statements made about the future City Charter Review Committee. And there were some statements made that someone spoke to all of the applicants and asked that each applicant, if anybody else in a city council had contacted them. And he was told that, by everyone, that they had not. And that's not true. I was, I spoke to the city council when they made the statement. We had a very good conversation about the Charter Review Committee. But I was never once asked if I'd been contacted by any other city council member, which I was not asked. And had I been asked, I would have told them yes, I had been communicated with several of the council members. So because this concerns me, I wanted to clarify that situation that, no, that was not true. No, I was not asked that question. And that should be corrected. And secondly, I personally took it as a kind of a attack on the rest of the city council, which I, I didn't really care for that much. We have a great city council here. They volunteer their time. They do great things for this city all the time. They get speakers come up here and attack them and accuse them and belittle them. But not many people step up here and congratulate, congratulate them and thank them for the work they do for us every day. So that would be the reason why I'm here. Thank you.
Louis Amstoy.
All right, real quick, just Louis Amstoy, 314 Rock Ridge. I was sitting at home watching the city council meeting previously. And it's such a bad experience that I wanted to point out to you, all of you, to keep in mind that ADA compliance is an important effort for websites in the future. I'm doing work on, on a public-facing website now that requires significant ADA compliance. You have the ability to both livestream to your channel and to YouTube. I strongly recommend that you consider the YouTube option because it gives you an immediate transcript and closed captioning, as does Facebook. It wouldn't be very difficult. I believe the livestreaming software is what I use. And I multi, I do multi-channel streaming now. But the, the way that the meetings are streamed currently is not exactly user-friendly. So I encourage you to offer that YouTube option or Facebook option in the near future. That's it. So I encourage you to offer that YouTube option or Facebook option in the near future. That's it. Thank you.
George Burdi.
Uh, George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. I was debating whether to even come and speak about it, but so I spoke at EIC last meeting, and, uh, you guys met about one of the topics I was speaking at EIC about, which is the, um, Lennar uh, project that you guys are considering using EIC funds for. I would urge you, as I urged EIC, to look at the codes behind, um, EIC, the 4B uh, codes in the local government code, specifically 505, I think it is, 100, 153, um, which is being referenced for this project. It has very strict stipulations in it, requirements, that the, um, housing that is funded in part by EIC funds needs to be applied in a very strict way. Specifically, any buyer of a home using that money, um, needs to be qualified. Basically, run through a qualification process to verify that their income level is actually no more than eighty percent of our area median, uh, household income, uh, which is contradicted by the contract that you guys were looking at. I don't know if you still are. And, you know, we don't have time in two minutes to discuss why this law is the way it is, but there's really valid reasons. So I would hope you wouldn't disregard this particular rule as you're deciding which rules you're going to and going to not violate. Um, so if you could, just check that out, uh, before the agreement comes to you and, um, basically rework the contract because it's, it's not valid as it stands. Thank you.
Barbara Dool Ferguson.
Barbara Dool Ferguson, Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. Um, I've got two little issues to bring up. The first one is, um, back in, I think it was 2021, 22, there was a change to the policy at the library for, um, allowing the downstairs meeting room to be used. Previous to that, um, individuals could, you know, request to have it open for a, uh, to reserve the room for a meeting. And, um, recently, um, in August, or actually before August, um, an inquiry was made about renting that, or getting permission to use that downstairs room for a book event. And, um, the, uh, library patron who made the request was told, no, that, that has now changed. We don't allow outside groups to use that room. That can only be used for library functions. Well, um, over the last, um, few months, due to my upcoming sixty-fifth birthday, I'm getting all these Medicare cards. And if you hit sixty-five, you know what I'm talking about. You get all these cards about your Medicare. Well, at least three of them are relating to events being held in that library room by groups who are associated with insurance companies. So in other words, they're providing information, but they're also selling a product. And, um, I am concerned about that policy not being put forth in an even-handed way about how people can use that. Secondly, is in the planning and zoning meeting last week, um, perhaps the week before, um, they violated number five of the stage four, um, restrictions by saying that they would agree to give a final plat approval and then allow for water, new water connections. That is in violation of our policy, and I hope when this comes before you that you'll take a look at that carefully.
That's the end of the. This is speakers. Thank you very much. All right, we are ready then for, for A, or for, number four, our consent agenda. And is there anything that needs to be pulled, counsel? We do have a citizen who wants to speak on item 4A. Okay, all right. Let's, uh, counsel, anybody have anything to say before we let them speak? All right, let's go ahead with that. Whoever that speaker is.
So, real quick, so 4A, this is the KEDC agreement, right? Good. So I don't really have a problem with you approving the agreement. I'm not here to say you shouldn't. But if you've looked at it, the, the metrics, the deliverables, none of them are result-driven. You're essentially hiring a firm to go bring economic impact to, to the city, and everything on there is involved in just marketing. It would be nice to see some quantifiable, uh, metrics such as how many jobs that paid more than the median currently? How many, um, how much change was there in the, um, the household incomes in the current, um, community versus before and after some of the jobs that they may or may not have brought? I mean, some of these are, and don't, please don't misunderstand this as an attack on Gil or KEDC. I fully support him and what they're doing. I just think that you guys could have little better metrics being used to evaluate whether we're getting a, a good bang for our buck. I mean, visits to the local industry, that's not really bringing anything here. Uh, lead generation is a start, but how many leads did we actually garner? You know, I mean, how many jobs did we pull in? Um, these are quantifiable, and you could be doing that. I'd just like to see maybe, and what is it, the budget for this thing is, how much is the city giving in? Are there budgets? Five hundred thousand. I don't know how much is the city, but it's a pretty big, pretty big budget, um, from EIC and the city combined. You might be a little, hold them a little more accountable to, you know, deliverables that mean something. Thanks.
All right, uh, counsel, do you have, um, we were going to pull that one. We should have voted on that separately. I apologize for that.
I was also gonna request to pull that one. Is, do you wanna do whatever you're gonna do on the other ones?
Let's go ahead, let's back up, and let's, uh, do we have a motion to approve? And 4C. Items 4B and 4C.
Okay.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. And, uh, Roman, do you have something to say on 4A?
Yes, so we'll go back to that one. Uh, is there someone here from KEDC to answer questions for us?
I can answer the questions for you.
Okay.
They're not here tonight.
Okay, um, I'd kinda hope in the future we'd have him here since this is an ask from them. The, I was gonna ask, one of the things that they're requesting is an, about a ten percent increase in our funding from sixty-two-five to sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty. I was gonna ask, what is that, what is that for? Why are they asking for an increase? And my second was gonna hit on what they've actually brought in, in terms of whether it's revenue, what they have met, because we see what they're supposed to do, but we haven't seen whether they've met those metrics or not. And so I was gonna hopefully have someone here to answer those questions, but I guess there's, they're not here.
Uh, we had them in, um, to talk about, uh, their updates last month. And so, um, I didn't, we didn't feel like we needed to have them here for this.
Well, I appreciate that, but in their update, they didn't give any information about this. I actually went back and looked at the recording to see if any of my collections would have been answered by that. And everything they gave in their report had nothing to do with their ask, what they've been delivering. So I was hoping we could get some of that information today since that's a separate topic from their report. And if they can give us that information. Is there anything that you have in terms of what do they report their statistics to staff? And is there anything that I can get from y'all after the meeting on what they've been, and then why they're asking for a ten percent increase in the funding?
We can certainly work on getting you some of that information and have Gil and, and his folks answer that. Uh, the ten percent request is across the board for all organs, all parts that are funding that, both from EIC, from the city council, and from the county. Partly, it's the cost of doing business. They, we had, I don't know, I can't remember the budget discussions that we had during our budget discussions related to, uh, KEDC specifically. But that was the, this is part of the full request, not only from the city council, also from EIC and from the county.
Right, and I understand, but I only sit on councils, so for the, I am a representative for the city's part of it. So the others can ask their questions on that if they want. Another thing here, do you know anything? I'm gonna ask these questions. If you don't know, that's fine. I can hopefully contact, um, KEDC to get some of these answers. Do you know why they went above their budget, the approved budget for this fiscal year that we're currently in, 23?
Michael, I think some of that has to do with some things that were, uh, will be paid for, uh, and, um, that it, it will, it doesn't all, it's kinda like our budget, it doesn't all balance out at the same time.
That's their estimated high year end.
Yeah, do you have something specific you're looking at, or just, I mean, the, the detailed budget is attached to the?
Which is what I'm looking at. I haven't highlighted here.
What, what are you looking at specifically, if I can answer?
Their total expenses. The approved budget for FY23 is fifteen, uh, five thousand, five hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred. Their estimated, um, end-of-year expenses for the fiscal year is five hundred, five hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-two.
Okay, well, that's.
Is that right, or is that wrong?
I mean, I'm gonna tell you what the percent is, and that might help a little bit, because that's not really a whole lot of dollars.
City's funding, so I'm just curious what their.
About twenty thousand dollars, so give or take. Well, I mean, they had, you can see some personnel increases. I'm sure they're seeing the same thing we are. I know that from Gil's presentation at EIC, which was pretty extensive for their budget and for, uh, their update last month that he provided most of this stuff. Um, and you can see some things that they cut also to reduce some things, because they're feeling the same kind of personnel pressures and those kind of things as we are as well. So you can see the specific line items.
And then lastly, do you know why they're asking for a eighty-four percent increase in their conference retreats and prospects budget under travel and meetings?
Not specifically. If you're asking me specifically what they're gonna do, then the answer is no. But if you're looking at conferences and retreats, the two thousand dollar increase, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 the twenty thousand dollar increase. It's an eighty-four percent increase on their conference retreats and prospects.
Some of that is, Roman, is coming from, uh, events that they are going to be going to, some international things and, uh, other conferences that, that will be part of what they're doing.
And I can certainly go back to that EIC presentation and pull specific questions for you if you want, but they did give a very in-depth, uh, conversation, and this was also included, you know, within our budget workshops, so it's been in there for a while. So I, I can't speak to details as far as where they're going and what they're doing, but, um, Gil certainly can, and we can get that.
Does this agreement end soon? When does, when's the end date?
Well, it'll start over on, with the budget.
The same fiscal year we're in, right? October 1st?
Well, they have a different fiscal year, but that's the way our funding agreement aligns. Our funding agreement with them aligns with our fiscal year. That does not align with theirs. Their fiscal year is not the same as ours.
Okay, and this isn't, what I'm about to say isn't a reflection on you or you, but I would hope, we didn't, we never got a report from KEDC on anything to do about their budget. As far as I know, I think EIC did get an extensive thing, but we never had an opportunity to hear from them or ask them questions. So I'm here at a loss with the little information that I am given, and I did try to reach out, just so you know, ahead of time, um, of this meeting. And so I'm trying to, I don't have the information I need to, you know, on this, and so that's why I was asking, when does this end? Do, is there a way to table it, or no?
Did we, did, to, to us, you reached out to, and didn't?
No, 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 not you, no, 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 KEDC. I didn't reach out to the city.
Okay.
Because these are KEDC direct questions I was hoping to ask.
Sure, but I mean, I could, yeah, I can pull those, obviously, from EIC, from that presentation, because, and they did, you're right, they did do an extensive presentation for EIC. They were within their contract with their ask, with their ten percent, stayed within that, and again, they're seeing the same inflationary situations we are. So, you know, that's why we included it that way, you know, back from, you know, budget workshops to.
Their possibility for us to table this and get more information, or?
That is up to the board.
That's up to you guys.
Okay, I'd.
Gil would have been very happy to sit down with you, Roman, and go over this line item by line item, had you contacted him and asked him.
Did you not hear what I just said? I said I reached out in advance of this meeting, so.
In enough time to give him time to, to make an appointment with you and sit down? And Gil would be more than happy to do that, Roman.
It's not a reflection on him, okay? But we have nobody here from KEDC here to answer questions that are asking for money.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second to approve as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
I just can't without all the information. I'm sorry.
And Mr. Garcia is opposed. Thank you very much.
I had more information, my vote might have changed.
If you would give Mr., uh, or call Gil, he would be happy, Roman. I know it's after the fact now, but he would be happy to explain all of that to you.
Absolutely, no, I will, either way, because I think it's good that I have that information, but it would have been nice beforehand.
It could have, it could have been gotten. Okay, 5, 5A.
The part, ordinance number ninety-nine dash eighteen is amended by adopting revised rate schedules for residential services and distributed generation rider, containing a cumulative clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date. We have no citizen speakers sign up.
A face that we used to see here.
Right, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see all of you tonight. Uh, my name is Amy Dozier, and I'm the Finance Director for Kerrville Public Utility Board. I'm here to talk to y'all tonight about residential rates that K-Pub charges. So K-Pub is a component unit of the City of Kerrville, which means that any changes to our residential rate structure, um, need to be approved by ordinance, um, by city council. So K-Pub's board has already approved this rate change September 20th, and now we're bringing it to city council. Um, but before voting on the ordinance, I wanted to give you a little bit of information about the change, and I'm gonna start with some information about, um, Kerrville, or K-Pub's residential rate structure. It's a little bit different than the rate structures y'all are used to seeing with, um, water and sewer rates. So, um, our rate structure is comprised of three components that are shown here. The first is the customer charge, flat fee each month, covers fixed costs with having an account. Then there's the distribution charge that's based on usage, and it covers costs related to, um, K-Pub's distribution system. And then the power supply charge is where things get a little bit different. So K-Pub does not generate any of its own electricity. Instead, we buy all of our electricity from a diverse group of power suppliers. And, um, we have two components of this power supply charge. The first is a fixed rate that's set in our tariff. Um, but as you probably know, energy prices are very volatile, so we have something called the power cost adjustment factor. And that is a multiplier that allows us to adjust the power supply charge up or down based on what we are actually paying for the power and then passing through to the customer. So the ordinance that you're voting on just contemplates a change with the customer charge and the distribution charge piece of the rate. All right, so the proposed rate change, as you can see here graphically, the good news is that even though we're asking for an increase in the monthly customer charge, it's being offset by a decrease in the distribution charge, and we are also lowering the cost of power adjustment factor due to lower energy prices. So because rate structures vary among electric companies, the industry standard to show a rate is in terms of build usage at a hundred, I mean, a thousand kilowatt-hours of power in a month. So this chart is showing you that for a residential customer that uses a thousand kilowatt-hours of power in a month, under both the current rate structure and the proposed rate structure, their bill would remain the same at a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Um, and this slide also mentions that this rate change is based on a cost of service study that we had done in 2018 by some, um, outside rates consultants. And the last time we changed our rate was in 2019. Um, the consultants actually recommended that we go to the, uh, rate proposed tonight in 2021, but we're proposing that it begins in November 2023. And finally, I just wanna show you, um, a comparison of K-Pub's rates to other electric utilities in our region. Um, so there's twelve utilities shown here. K-Pub is, um, at the very bottom there with their rate of a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Um, this is based on a rate comparison in July 2023, and it's using the same convention that we just talked about with the thousand, um, kilowatt-hours of power being used. All right, so as you can see, at the bottom, at the hundred and two fifty, and then even after this rate change, will still be. All right, so as you can see, at the bottom at the hundred and two fifty, and then even after this rate change, we'll still be at that one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents rate. So K-Pub's mission includes offering our services at the lowest responsible price, and we feel that this request is in keeping with that mission. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, questions, Heather?
If the typical bill for a hundred, I mean, a thousand kilowatt hours will be the same after this rate change.
Correct.
Why are we, why are you changing the rate?
So, I'll go back to this slide here. So this cost of service study that we did, a rate change, a rate consultant that we worked with, what we really looked at was breaking out our rates into these components and looking at the costs that each component covers. And so what they found was you actually should be charging more for the customer charge because you have some fixed costs there that are not aligning with your current rate structure on the distribution side, going the other way, you could actually reduce that. So basically, we're trying to line up our rate structure with the way our costs actually are incurred.
And that's from the study that you commissioned earlier?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, and that study was provided to council back in 2018. So I know you don't necessarily have that, but I'm happy to provide the entire study for you if you're interested in looking at it.
Thank you. No more questions.
Amy, I've got a question for you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So it's based on a thousand kilowatt hours. How does it vary if you have twenty-one hundred kilowatt hours? Does it still, does it still stay the same?
Yeah, so that's a good question, yeah. So our average residential usage is actually more like twelve hundred as opposed to a thousand. So looking at our average rate, our average customer, it would actually be a little bit different there. But that thousand kilowatt hours is the break even point. You could look at it like that. Anything that you use above the thousand kilowatt hours, your rate is actually gonna go down, or your overall bill's actually gonna go down. If you are using less than a thousand kilowatt hours per month, then you'll see a slight increase in your bill. For that average customer that uses twelve hundred kilowatt hours in a month, their bill would go down by one dollar, their total bill.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I appreciate you doing that and, and just so everybody's aware, I did a couple of calculations. And I think those that are gonna be at the higher end of their usage are gonna see a good significant decrease in the rates, which is good. So it's good to see that with the one thousand that we're using for a base, it stays the same. And even as we keep going on, we're actually reflecting what, like you said, the expenses are actually being incurred by K-Pub. So their rates are actually gonna go down a little bit, so I appreciate you doing that. That is all assuming that the power supply charge is gonna stay the same because that's the one that we don't approve. That's approved solely by K-Pub. So my question on that was, do you foresee a time in the near future where we're gonna be increasing that? And so we, we, assuming we pass this now, we're gonna be increasing your base charge, the customer charge, and then.
Decreasing the distribution charge.
Decreasing the distribution, and then y'all's, the power supply is solely on your discretion, so.
And we are, well, it's not solely on our discretion. It's based on what our actual power supply cost is.
Right.
But it does not require council approval.
Yes.
So in November, we are reducing that multiplier because we've seen lower power costs lately, primarily due to lower natural gas costs. We tried to take a little bit longer term approach to that power, or the power cost adjustment factor. We could like change that every single month based on if our costs went up or down. And we decided that that's not good for our customers. So we tried to take more like a year-long approach. Of course, that's based on futures prices in the energy market, which may or may not, you know, actually pan out. But based on our budget for 2024, which is based on the futures market for energy prices, we think that we can leave our, once we reduce that power cost adjustment factor in November, we'd like to leave that in place for the rest of fiscal year 2024. But that is subject to actual energy prices, so.
And is that power supply charge decreased to the number that? Because there were a couple of different ones in our packet, probably just based on the various discussions. Is that the one that you're, the point zero four zero six?
That, so that's the base charge, so that, the, let's see, I'll go back. So if you look back at the first slide. All right, here we go. Okay, so that power supply charge is based, is actually comprised of two rates. So the fixed rate is the forty cents that you're talking about.
Okay.
And then the power cost adjustment factor is the part that K-Pub changes on a month-to-month basis. So there's no change in that fixed rate. It's just that multiplier that, that we are changing in November based on our actual power cost. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes. That was my last question. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, any questions, council, for Amy? Any more? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four on first reading.
Second. Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, Amy, and you guys do a marvelous, marvelous job, so we appreciate you.
And Mr. Wheeler, thank you for being here too.
Six A. All right, this is a second reading, as are the next several here. Want to read us in?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, second reading. An ordinance changing the zoning of a property known as 202 McCollman Drive, consisting of Lot One, Block One of the Oak Hollow Estates Edition and within the city of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single res, single-family residential zoning district R1 to a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is the second reading, council. Do you have any questions that need to be answered? All right, are we ready for a motion? Are we, yes, are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I've moved to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. And we now come to the budget, six B.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, second reading. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the City of Curville, Texas fiscal year 2024, providing appropriations for each city department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing the savings and severability clause. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, thank you.
I do not have a presentation for you. I think we've kind of talked this one as far as we can, but happy to answer any questions that may have come up between last time we saw each other.
Okay, council, any questions for Amy? I'm Amy, I'm sorry, Julie.
My sister's Amy too, so it's fine. I answer whatever.
All right, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five to adopt the city's budget for the fiscal year 2024 on second reading.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, and I believe we need a roll call for this one.
All right, council mem, or I'm sorry, Mayor Eichner.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
All right, it passes four to one. Councilmember Garcia is in opposition.
And mayor, you need that second motion as well. Thank you.
And this is number, we have number one there. We have number three on the sheet that was handed to us.
I'm happy to make a motion ratifying the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Second. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. And we are ready for six C.
Ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, second reading. An ordinance levying an ad valorem property tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the City of Curville, Texas for fiscal year 2024, apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point five five nine five, which is effectively a two point nine eight percent increase in the tax rate.
Do you have a second? Mr. Harris, thank you, and I believe we need a roll call on this one.
Mayor Eichner.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
It passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. All right, Julie, you and your staff, you can take a short vacation before you start on next year's budget. Thank you. We appreciate all that you guys have done. This is a tremendous project and you can be the sigh of relief for a little bit. Thank you, thank you. All right, we are ready for six D, Shelley.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, second reading. An ordinance admitting chapter twenty-six building and building regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, by adding a new article eleven grading and filling to create regulations, including a permit requirement for an activity associated with a disturbance of land under specified conditions, providing for a penalty and a maximum amount of two thousand dollars for violations thereof, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, and this is, as she said, also a second reading. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. And all in favor, please raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are ready for some appointments. And the first one is Senior Services Advisory Committee.
Mayor, Councilmember Harris and I were the interview team.
Okay.
We had seven applicants, all of them very well qualified. It's hard to narrow it down to the five positions available. I'm thankful for everyone who applied. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Tammy Amerson Wilson, Irving Hart, Gretchen Rye, Paige Sumner, and Lynette Weddick or Whedick.
Okay, do we have a second for that? You will second that? Is there any discussion from anyone? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. And I want to echo Mr. Herring's comments. Thank you to all who applied for that. We appreciate it very much. All right, we have two appointments that are left. We could go into executive session on these. I don't think it's going to be necessary. Is there anyone who feels that it is? All right, let's look at, the first one is appointments to the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. And we have three vacancies and we have three present applications, excuse me, for reappointment. Fred Gamble, Catherine Howard, and Bruce Strachey. And I believe Councilmember Garcia will agree with me that we would recommend reappointing all three of those. And I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, and again, thank you to those people for being willing to do that again. Seven C, appointments to the zoning board of adjustment. Do we have any motions on this one?
Yes, I, we have four vacancies. We only had one applicant, and that applicant is eligible for reappointment. And so at this time, I would make a motion to reappoint Mr. Colleen to the zoning board of adjustments.
I will second that. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, and again, thank you to those who, to Mr. Colleen, and we appreciate his willingness. And that brings us to the end of. That's, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have the executive session. That's right. Okay, so this one, would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor, just, I don't know if we need to go into executive session for this. I think this may have been. I reached out to staff to get clarification on this one and the initial five A agenda item where we approved the rate change. And it was my understanding that this one was a supplement to that item in case we needed any further information that could possibly lead to confidential information being disclosed. So we approve the rate change unless anybody else in council feels like we need to go in. That's my understanding.
Anybody feel the need? Mr. Herring?
Does Mr. Wheeler?
I was saying, do y'all feel like y'all need to give us anything? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right then. So we will not have to have an executive session. Wow, it's seven oh six. What have we missed? Something's wrong here. Okay, any action items that need to go on the future agendas?
Yes, I would like to ask that council consider appointing a committee to go over revising our current animal ordinances. And if we could get that on the future agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for that, so we will give that to you guys, please. And before we adjourn, Roman, I just want to say we will help you get appointments with anybody that you need appointments for. I don't like your coming in here without all the information that you need. And in this situation particularly, we could have gotten all of that for you. So I would just like for you to know that, reach out to staff, reach out to me, and we will make sure that you are in touch with the people that you need to be, so that when you come in, you are fully informed.
I appreciate that, mayor. Thank you. I may take you up on that at some point. I just wanted to make it clear. I wasn't trying to say anything about staff or anything because that was not for them to even have to present to us. They weren't requesting the money from us. And like I said, it's not a problem with actually having to get ahold of them because I know them personally. I've had meetings with them before. It was probably just a busy time for either one of us, so.
Reach out to, we'll be happy to make that happen, okay? Because coming in uninformed is, is, is not good for you, it's not good for staff.
You of us.
And it's not good for council. So, so please do not hesitate to make that call and start early enough that we can make sure we can make that happen, please.
Do that then while we're on it, on the items for future agendas, then I would ask, if we can talk about, you just reminded me of a, something I've been wanting to talk about. I think it'd be prudent for us to start figuring out a way to get our agenda items sooner because that's the most difficult process of this whole thing, is we get them on Saturday. And I personally don't like to burden staff by sending them emails over the weekend that they feel obligated to have to respond to us to. And so I wait till Monday to usually send my questions. If we even had one, two more days available to us to do that additional research and set up a meeting, even setting up a meeting on a Monday sometimes, if it's not with staff, somebody outside, a third-party entity, is sometimes difficult to have to do on the Monday to be prepared and ready to come in on Tuesday. So as a future agenda, I'd like us to try to see what we can do to talk about, I know councils before have tried to work that out and figure out what we can do. And I think it'd be a good idea for us.
Get it on Friday afternoon.
What did I say?
Saturday.
I meant Friday, I'm sorry. We get it on Friday, and then starting Saturday and Sunday after we reboot it, that's when we usually, all of our questions come up and. we reboot it, that's when we usually, all of our questions come up in.
Well, that's true, although we do get the advanced list of almost everything that will be on that agenda, that we get, gosh, two weeks ahead of time. And so now, I will use that as maybe I need more information, that just, just to make sure that I have what I need, like, before, before everything comes out to us, so.
I, I know we get that, but it's a little premature sometimes even to reach, to figure out that point because we have no, sometimes no idea what the contents of those items are going to be. And when we actually see, like, the specific things I was bringing up in the packet are the questions I would have. I really wouldn't have many questions if I just saw the title of the agenda item. That's why we get a package review.
Well, and I think staff would be willing even ahead of time to, to give you kind of an update or a heads up on some of those things.
They have an open door policy. You can ask any question, anytime, any day of the week.
I'm not questioning that, councilmember. I'm not questioning that, their open door policy, I know they do. My agenda item request is to figure out a way that once we get the packet, to be able to have at least one, maybe even two more days to set up meetings with whether it's staff or third parties. If I reach out to somebody on a Monday and said, I need to meet with you either today or tomorrow because we have a meeting on Tuesday and I need some answers to prepare me for something on Tuesday, that's usually not enough time. And we get it at the, by the end of the day on Friday.
It's always enough time for me, I meet with them every Monday. It's, it's plenty of time for me.
Right, I don't do that for legal reasons, and you, you're aware of that, so.
Well, I think that, I mean, we can put it on the agenda, absolutely. But staff has, they're under the gun with trying to get all of this put together at the last minute. And I think that's, there's changes, there's additional information that needs to go in there. I mean, we can look at it again, but that's the reason that every time we've talked about this, that for them to be able to give us the best they can give us, it, it's hard to do it before Friday.
I don't need, okay, I think, I hope my point is clear, that I'm not asking for the agenda packet, but it'd be nice to have additional information so I could start, you know, reaching out to people and getting whatever information's going to help me with my vote. I mean, I think it's, I owe it to the people I represent to make sure I get all that information to thoroughly come in here and do a job that they've elected me to do. And depriving me of that information by not giving all of us enough time doesn't suit itself. So I appreciate that, hopefully we can get that in a future agenda to discuss again.
Say one thing if that's...
Please.
Underlinked to what we've been discussing, but I want to say publicly, thank you to Kim Meismer for serving as our interim city manager. Face and poise. Hope the guy that knew one will be the same.
Who else will sponsor? Councilmember Garcia's?
Oh, do we have a second for his, his agenda item for the future? I'm sorry, Roman.
I thought you said it was going to go on the agenda.
Well, we had not, we had, didn't get the second, so that was my fault.
Do we have to vote on these?
Well, but you need a second for us to vote.
I have to say, we didn't vote on the other one, though.
Yes, you did.
We didn't, we just got a second.
Oh, we didn't.
I just want to make sure, we're all in the process if you're going to require that mine.
We can vote on Brenda's, if you want to. Okay, you seconded it. All right, all in favor, tell me again.
Animal ordinance. Appointing a committee.
The animal ordinance, okay.
Isn't that something that staff's already working on for us?
Well, they will now. We've given, if we vote on it, all in favor of that, please, raise your hand.
This is different, this is setting up a committee, right? Isn't that what their request is, to set up a committee?
Yes.
I thought they're already working on the animal ordinance. Did we figure out what they've been working on?
Yeah, I've been in discussions with our attorney over the legal legislative aspects of the ordinances. But there are some other issues that, that I would like to get looked at, most especially by legal, and I would like to have a committee help me with those other issues.
So probably, you should vote on that one, Mike.
Yeah, I, I think she wants the, the council to consider a committee at a future meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Wait to see what y'all have because I don't understand what, what we're doing. If they're already working on something, I want to see at least what they've been working on.
She's asking for a committee to be set up.
I, no, I get that, but we had a future agenda item long before on this, and it's been on the pending list that they're working on it. So I want at least to hear what they've been working on before we throw in a committee to do something else. So, I mean, y'all can vote however you want, I just, I want to see what they have first.
Let's leave it this way, go add a committee to whatever it is that they are doing, okay? All right, you had a second, or did you get a second on yours? We didn't, we had a second on Roman's.
No.
No, okay. Roman, I also want to say, you used the word being deprived of information. I have to say, we are never deprived of information. And I think that's a, a word that should not be used in this situation. We have a staff that is willing to give us information whenever we, and deprived of getting information is not accurate.
Keep turning this back on staff, mayor, I'm not talking about staff, let's just make that clear. I don't know how many more times you want me to say it, I know that.
Yeah.
So let's just get that clear.
Being deprived.
Stop talking about staff and stuff, I'm not talking about staff. You got to make that clear because now you're turning the whole situation around and making it something it's completely not. And that is something we shouldn't be doing.
Well, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just saying that using the word, that you are deprived of information is not an accurate statement. So, thank you. Okay, I believe we'll call it quits at 7:16. Council is adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.